Good afternoon, the time is 7:20, we're now, uh, we're getting to, uh, excuse me, we're getting to open the meeting. Uh, the first law of the business will be the public participation, and we have Dr. Porter. Thank you, Dr. Porter, that's the business staff report.
Thank you, Dr. Kenlaw, and board members, uh, we're excited, we have a lot to go over tonight. I'm going to ask our first presenter, Mrs. Dye, who's the supervisor to come forward, and give a very good update for the social studies department.
Before you start, Ms. Dye, I would like to say trustee Gortier and trustee Hillary has now joined us.
I have 20 minutes, sir.
Mile of 18.
Well, good evening, thank you for having me, I'm excited to share with you some things that are going on in social studies. Um, gonna go over our start performance from last year, um, some new textbook options, some professional developments that we're focusing here, and some things that are going on inside and outside our classrooms. This is last year's data, the actual level one rate was 50% for eighth grade, 41% for U.S. history. It has increased this year by 45 questions respectfully for eighth grade and EOC. Um, we're very excited about being able to meet those new goals of using new textbook options. K through five adopted Pearson's Marvel Text Edition, and secondary went with Rock Hills Network. Um, because I am the all industry supervisor, um, I am more familiar with the Pearson's website. I was very excited about the online content and the ability for teachers to be able to assign things to their classes as individual students that are aligned to the content to help improve reading improvement as well. And there was another sample of the different activities that can be assigned to their students. Some of the professional development that we worked on throughout the year, um, my favorite, of course, was positive technology pieces, using those new tablets, like vocabulary, and also, uh, sorry. Uh, using the NBC Learn was a part of our option as well. And then finally, in January, I worked with K through two science teachers and social studies teachers to act in vocabulary, talk with content areas. The PLP is part of the A and S program, um, it was my personal belief, as well as the others' curriculum supervisors, that we have a way to be able to make changes to curriculum as well as benchmarks, and this gave us a way to provide resources to them without having to go back and update the spoken sequence for the beginning of the year. We can update as we go across, um, six weeks benchmark exams. So this allows teachers to share with us and for us to share with teachers. There is a group for K through third, and a group for text history and fifth grade U.S. history as well. And then finally, just a couple of samples, some things that I've been able to witness within the classrooms. This is a fifth grade assignment, looking at historical leaders. And this was a Art Federation of the Good, Bad, and the, the students really enjoyed this activity, and they did work on it as a group, and it really showed their use of their vocabulary, the active vocabulary while they worked on this assignment. And of course, kindergartners, their focus is community, um, this was an at-home project that students brought in, and they were able to piece together a map of our community of where I'm at. Um, of course, consolidating Constitution Week, and we did have the Jefferson County Bar Association come in and send speakers to several of our campuses. And then finally, the Lincoln High School Taffy Program, um, they actually scripted and cannot perform at four elementary campuses a President's Day Program, which is actually a cabinet that had some skills of some of our, um, more renowned, um, presidents of the U.S., and so. Thank you for your time. Want to come in and turn?
Trustee Ward. Just not just one thing, Amanda, I know she's doing a great job, and we are blessed to have her as one of our new leaders in the district, and, um, I know what a great job she does for the teachers, in helping them to be as effective as possible with kids in classroom. So I'm glad you're here, I mean, you're not leaving, so.
Well, I appreciate it, and I have to say, when I first took the position, I was really, like, excited about it, and as the time has gone, I'm looking forward to it for next school year, and for further development, so thank you.
Well, Mrs. Ward, really, what do you think would probably be the largest challenge you may face in educating this social study?
Um, for our secondary, I do feel like that a lot of times when we prepare for testing, um, sometimes we forget to really hone in on the social studies foundational skills, and I think that with this new adoption, there's so much re-integrated into it that teachers now feel comfortable using those resources to make sure that social studies instruction is still taking place. So I feel like there's challenges that in the past, um, without the current updated adoption, that we may have fell behind in some areas, but with this new adoption, has been able to recover, some, I mean, make some gains within that area of social studies, so.
Any questions, trustees, Dr. Porter?
And Mrs. Uh, next on the agenda, we have Judge Gortier, who we're always happy to see, and he has a representative instead of his students, so I'm gonna ask Judge Gortier to come forward and introduce who he has with him and his program.
Well, thank you, ma'am, you lead, Dr. Porter, we have a lot of this great board of education here in the city, for all the finished students, and all the guests, and other person that we have seen. I had, uh, worked with class that's called MAPS, MAPS for Academic and Personal Success, over at Memorial High School. We began back in December dealing with school rules, and we dealt with school rules. You tell Dr. Porter, we had a lot of early information, some of the research that I passed on to Dr. Mitchell, he turned and passed on to you, so if you could get board members, we need to sit in for the morning, sure, he would share it with you. But that's just not just why we're here, on this evening, I have Ms. Shatton Romar, who is going to present, and she has asked for backup, some students who decided that they would want to be here with her to show support. Others would be here, but some had soccer games, baseball games, and some were going out of town for Easter. But if you would allow her, we certainly appreciate it.
Yeah, how was that about, so far, what you?
Good evening, my name is Cherry Romar, and I'm a senior at Memorial High School. I come before you as the worst for many students at Memorial High. There is an issue we as a whole deal with, and that issue is dress code. There are many reasons and facts on why this subject is an issue. The first reason is education. Dress code is education because if the student walks inside of classrooms, and they may have on the wrong jacket, or even the wrong type of shirt, or the wrong type of pants, teacher may put them out. And that affects instructional time that's given to the student. And if the student doesn't get the right instructional time, then when they get to college, or sometime later down the road when they take a test, they may not know the information that's on the test because they've been put out so much because of what they have on. Another issue is religion. Religion is really, is a really big thing, um, around the United States, around the United States. It requires certain clothing, and if a student can't express who they believe in and what they believe in, that is also a problem too. Another problem is financial disabilities. Now our families are financially stable to buy the type of clothing as of the dress code, and because of that, the dress code causes issues in our homes as well. Another thing is earrings for guys. Earrings are not a threat to anybody, nor harm anyone. They're unisex and not an issue. The last thing is electronics. Electronics, um, is a very good useful thing to use for education. It's used to employ students and may just help them focus more. There are many educational websites that can help students understand the curriculum being taught, such as Khan Academy, which touches every subject that there is. We are requesting our consideration of revising the dress code and allowing high school students to express themselves dressing to a proper with class. Thank you for your time.
Any question, Board, uh, trustee Thomas?
No, you didn't want to stop, you were great about standing up, so speaking with you, what you need to say, thank you, thank you, please do, please do that, thank you.
Trustee Gortier?
Yes, uh, Ms. Romar, I'd like to thank you for coming, I saw and I heard you when we was preparing for this, when me and Dr. Kenlaw visited your class that day, and you were very happy at that time, uh, maybe three months ago, two months ago, and you're very happy now, and I, like, thank you for that courage and to stand up in front of this board and your superintendent with that great presentation, thank you.
Trustee Ambrose?
Thank you, ladies, so much. I have a question, what would you consider an appropriate dress code?
Um, an appropriate dress code for teenagers? I would consider jeans and maybe different types of tees, um, not so much as collared shirts, maybe different colored tees with jeans and, um, not the ripped jeans, just regular nice appropriate jeans that they can wear to school, and different colored polo shirts if they can afford it, if not, just different colored tees, I think that'll be fine.
And your chairman of guards, Mary, that?
I don't know.
We'll thank you ladies very much.
Well, you all seem, okay. Well, uh, Ms. Romar, I, again, I'm seeing you, trustee Gortier, I'm here visiting the class with, uh, Judge Gortier, and she, this particular day, Ms. Romar spoke on a presentation about dress code, we were so impressed with her. But, uh, we have to look at a whole lot of situations where it comes to dress code, like we talked about. However, I'm glad that you brought this to the board's attention and your superintendent of schools, and we may consider some of the changes, uh, but just like we told you back then, it's a lot of things we have to take in place before we change. And I think last year, we decided to have students wear jeans, and that was a big step for this particular board. And, you know, I, and I think the superintendent, he wanted to sign a whole lot of that, he can, but that's some of the things we have to take into consideration.
Well, as the board members would say, thank you, but I will say this, and coming from a different perspective, this is Romar and the rest, I, I love when you speak, and when Mrs. Ambrose asks you a question, you answer that question in a full sentence. I am so proud of you, I love when our students are able to express themselves in correct English, and speak, and look at someone in the eye when they're speaking to them, that is absolutely wonderful. So thank you, I, I can go home proud tonight because you are, are here and what you did tonight, so thank you.
Will any of you, any of your elders, who would like to say something, Judge Gortier? This is your opportunity. Trustee, trustee Thomas?
Again, I want to thank all you ladies from the board, the support of Romar, and Judge Gortier, because we have been showing that he's been supporting since August 15, and he's still doing it. And as well, thank you for being a community leader, for, for, oh. Yeah, I mean, it sounds like you're old. But thank you, thank you for your investment in our community, thank you, Judge.
Thank you, ma'am. Uh, trustee Muskie, Dr. Porter, here.
Okay, next, we're going to go, uh, with some presentations that I have, and we're going to, um, we're going to double up on one of them, uh, the fifth bullet, which is on the second page, I'm going to merge it. We're going to start, and, uh, we're going to, you have a presentation on here that's blue, is to put off the I S C 2016-17 budget review. Uh, we are being ready to start our budget process again, and with all of that, we'll come looking at our finances, making sure that we are where we're supposed to be. I have had board members to ask me for certain things, uh, first of all, we're going to talk about tracking devices with Mrs. Chapman and Mr. Rito in a minute, but it did, it comes into the budget as well. And also, I have been asked to update our future high-dollar preventative maintenance type issues. And we have looked and tried to find out, so I've merged all of that, and, uh, well, this is Jean, I want to thank Mrs. Jean and her team who are here as well. Uh, the team, we first, all of, they merged all of this together to find out exactly how, anytime you look for high-dollar, um, high-dollar cost, it comes with a cost, and you have to find the money before you implement all of these things. Uh, and this Richard was once, was part of this well, and the executive team, always on Monday mornings, were trying to find out ways in order to, what we, what we tend to not look at so much is how we cut the budget. Jean tries to remind us that we need to cut and we want to add, so we're trying to figure out a way to do that. But we'll start off by asking Jean to start off, and then we'll kind of piggyback off of some things.
Thank you, uh, President of, uh, Kenlaw, board members, and Dr. Porter. I'd like to personally again acknowledge our budget group that are here with us in addition to the executive team. We have our controller, uh, Mrs. Lisa Dixon Davis, um, our budget, and our AP accountant, Mr. Ken Train, and our budget coordinator, Miss Stephanie Barr, that's joining us. I'm asking Stephanie to kind of help put through the charts for, the pages for us. Um, let's first go to, just look at the big picture. What we wanted to do is to just first give you an idea of where we are now, and then you'll look a little bit at where we're going. And, and then, as Dr. Porter indicated, when we get to the where we're going, we want to focus on anticipate large expenditures, we expect to spend between now and the end of August. Uh, don't be to ask any questions that you feel are appropriate, we'll be glad to take, take, to take those questions at any time. Where are we now? Well, we look at our revenues, and these are the two major sources of our revenues. Uh, and if they're, they're blended together, the state always, if your local taxes are lower, then they provide additional funds through state funding. Uh, they've got a certain amount that they're trying to keep us at certain level, that they're trying to keep us at. So what we've shown here is, first, we're looking at 2014-15, what did we project, and how did we do? How did our actuals come in? And notice, we, we did pretty good as far as our local, our local was a little bit higher than the estimated. Our state funding was less, again, as the local funding was more, then the state funding comes down in the floor. That is the way the formulas work. Uh, but overall, we received about three, we were less, about $300,000 less than what we had projected in our budget. So what did we do for 2015, and where are we? We budgeted our local taxes a, a lower because of Valero, and notice that we, we, we were projecting, um, 5.5 million less than what we had last year. Uh, we know now that it's probably going to be even less because of the reductions that we received for the 15, 16 school year for Valero. Uh, our state funding is a little higher because of our projections of lower taxes, again. The opposite is true, if the, the local taxes are lower, then the state funding comes up. As a result, we are, when you compare our projections for 2015 to our actuals for 2014, um, we've got almost $3 million dollars less than we've been receiving for the year of hope. Okay? Uh, our revenues and our expenditures, our chapter 313 projected revenues decreased, uh, this current year, about $2 million. Our projected payroll expenditures appear to be, um, right now, under budget for the fiscal year. Our overall projected expenditures are in line with the budget for the fiscal year. We just wanted you to know where we are for 2015. All right, where, where does the money go? Uh, we've seen this chart before, and we just wanted to refresh your memories on where the majority of our dollars are, and notice the big red, uh, circle, piece of the pie, that's payroll. And so, we then, we wanted you to have information on our payroll, how does that break up into where, what's the biggest part of the dollars spent in payroll? Now, this is based on our 2015-16 budget, and where we budgeted the majority of our dollars is instructional. So where are we going? Now, this is, this is our first budget discussion for 16, um, 16-17. The calendar, I know it's a little difficult to read on the screen, we've given you all our copy, but this is our budget development calendar, so we've had activities so far. Things are underway to try to get the budget in line so that we can, we'll be able to adopt the budget in August. We'd be focused on this slide, just to give you an idea of where, when we will have our discussions as we've had in the past. So we've got a budget retreat scheduled for May 26. That will be the first in-depth discussion on what our budget looks like, as best you can tell. Um, potential revenue impacts, remember on that slide where we showed that our, we, we received about $2 million less this year? We expect about $2 million impact on our chapter 13 foreign trade zone revenues, um, the cost of fuel prices, even though we all enjoy, or I know I do, enjoy the reduction of fuel prices at the pump, but that also adversely affects us as far as the revenues that we will receive on our foreign trade zone agreements. Um, our maintenance operation tax reduction is about $5 million as a result of the settled lawsuits. So we wanted to kind of focus a little bit on some of our budget adjustments, but, uh, and how do we get to a budget for the time of 16-17? We look first at any return cost changes that were made in 15-16, so those changes will need to be incorporated in our ongoing budget for the new year. We look at operational changes which, uh, may affect the year. Um, some of the things that, that may affect it, we listed the dual enrollment. Um, as you're aware, we're looking at, um, opening up our Woodrow Wilson Early Childhood High School. We project that we will need, uh, to increase our budget by $300,000 more for our dual enrollment. Um, we will also include, have included, or feel like we need to include in our budget for next year, a partial year for program development, with our hiring of counselor and administrative staff to help us manage the, get us prepared for a full year of Woodrow Wilson at the new facility. These are some of the options, and some of the things that we are exploring. We're looking at the potential of maybe outsourcing some of our services. Again, as Dr. Porter has indicated, we look at things that we can increase our budget, but we also have to look at the possibility of ways to decrease our budget. So these are just a few of the ideas that we have started kicking around and starting to discuss. Where else to keep the, for the past, outsourcing our transportation department and our child nutrition department. Um, curriculum enhancement software, we're looking at, uh, some software that's already been added, as I indicated in that first rule, where it says recurring cost changes made, we may be purchase I station, so we need to add dollars to our budget to address I station, and some other curriculum enhancement software. Although van equipment repairs included, there is, like a new, what we have been doing in the past is, at, at the after-school start, and we had enough of equipment repairs, we've had to juggle and move things, money around, and try to locate adequate dollars in order to fund repairs of our van equipment. As you know, we've increased the number of instruments that we have. So we feel it would be appropriate to also include a budget item on, on an annual basis for repair of the instruments. Dr. Porter, do you want to cover the other items for?
We're also, uh, looking at the ASAP program, we had a conversation with board trustees and stuff, so we will be looking at how we will proceed with the ASAP program, the Access Student Assistance Project, uh, for the 16-17 school year. And of course, we will be looking at salary increase, all, I mean, every, every district, I think, wants to give their employees a raise. And unlike, not like ourselves, we want to do the same thing. However, we really have to look at the cost and see where we're going to find the money to increase salaries, if that is possible. Uh, Mr. Parker reminds us every Monday morning that health insurance will rise again this year. It will increase, so that means that this will be the second year in a row that it has increased, if not the third year. So we have to look at if we're going to fund health, uh, the increase, or, uh, if the raise, if the raise will cover the increase, or how all of that will come into play. We do have pretty, we're critical shortage stipends, uh, and we, uh, Dr. Edward has spoke on possibly increasing those critical shortage stipends for our employees in order to try to get more teachers here in our district, and encourage them to come. So we really have to look at that, see if there is a cost. Uh, even for monitoring devices, that is something that you will hear, can hear about in a little bit, uh, how we will fund those for the 16-17 school year. And an idea, um, that Jean's come up with, maybe, that maybe something we could do as district contributions for festival spending accounts, and actually what that is, is the district would put, uh, as you said, approximately $500 in an account, it comes with insurance costs, and it's a card that they would have, and when they propose to dock, they would be able to use that money as a, um, a call, uh, a payment, or something like that, but that is the idea, uh, that we're, that we're just looking at. If you turn the page, uh, as you said, anticipated, I was asked, we have anticipated large expenditures. Uh, obviously, we, we looked and looked, and, and I want to purpose this by saying that this may not be all. This is what we've come up with now, we don't know what's going to happen in the future. So there may be some other costs that comes up that we have not brought tonight because it is a, um, a rolling type, um, rolling type, um, year, so we will see. Uh, anticipated large expenditure would be at one time, kind of a balance that we already do for the flames you want, and we'll just have to see how, how we look at that, and which, the parts that they need. So we will look at that, not saying that this is what we're doing, but I'm bringing everything to you tonight, uh, so there will be no surprises. Also, um, potential purchases, this is a vendor list that we have, basically in Educate, Education on U-Center. A lot of these will be renewals, and they will come up, uh, for renewals, and some of them will be over $25,000. If you turn the page, we have some extremely large, um, expenditures that are coming up. Uh, the practice field of Memorial High School, we need to update the practice field, there's some things that we need to do in the practice field, I'm talking about at Memorial High School. And then, uh, the baseball softball dugout renovations that we talked about, and we will be bringing, uh, the price for it as well. Woodrow Wilson Early College High School, uh, I would like to say, Dr. Edward, Dr. Stretcher, Mrs. Galop, and myself, along with Mrs. Baptiste, had a wonderful meeting on this week with the students from Lincoln High School that are interested in the Early College High School. So we were very, very proud of our students and our parents, who were so supportive of that idea. So a lot of work has gone into that proposal for the elementary. Uh, we probably will have the replacement of the fire and security system. Uh, administration, we have roof repairs that probably will come. Uh, we did not do anything with the roof with the last one, that was not part of it. And then we have servers, uh, emergency services, uh, and emergency services, that's when we start going out for bid, for those services for emergencies in case of fire, in case of hurricanes. Uh, HVAC filter maintenance, which we go out for every year, additional cameras at all campuses, and that is with upgrades and additional camp, uh, uh, campus. If you recall, uh, this year, this legislative session has caused us to have to put cameras into special ed departments. At one time, we did not do that, but we will be looking at how we move into that direction. Uh, property value study, which we had to do, line bargain, will be where we fund. Uh, Travis Elementary, uh, obviously we get rid of the bill. Uh, Travis Elementary, uh, obviously we need to build a new school, portal building, at least, which you might have to get some portals. Special ed students, now, we look at portals for the special ed. That means we have to build those portals because those students must have restrooms in those portals. Um, the early foundation package and of course, the network equipment upgrade. Terrell Elementary over all renovations additions, Sam Houston Early Foundation Package, Network Equipment, and Memorial High, uh, Memorial High, Memorial Ninth Grade Center, the civil, civil foundation and steel package. So as I said, this may not be everything. I want to make that perfectly clear, but as we went through, I have been asked to give a, um, update on where we are going and how much things are going to cost in the future. And these are some proposals. Now, obviously, we're getting all this stuff together, and we will bring it to the board for approval, and we will discuss it as we move forward. This is not anything of tonight, but we will be, uh, this is the discussion I have.
Okay, um, trustee, you told me all.
Okay, first, well, you said that wasn't everything, but I know at one time we did discuss about fixing our track at our dinner show so we can host our own track.
Correct, and that will be coming with the next sale. That, right what you see here is everything from present through August. Okay, so you are correct, the track is in the bond, we will be renovating that, yes. But this is everything from present to August that possibly will come, and we have everything together to bring to you.
Trustee, you read, um, the, uh, cameras, um, for $500,000, are those going to be at high resolution?
Yes, um, and I want to make sure that everyone understands, our cameras are working. However, there are some that we have to update and the high resolution. And there's some cameras at the stadium, uh, that we really have to look at and make sure that we upgrade those cameras, yes.
Trustee, tell us.
Uh, the cameras at the stadium are working now, remember at one time they weren't working, they were there. Now, how is that standing now?
The cameras are working, yes, they're working, but they are not as clear at night.
Are they new?
Well, those cameras, I don't know.
About three years?
Oh, about three, two, I don't know, about two, three years.
When I heard about about three years old, and we were supposed to go to the high school, but that's the new facility.
Correct, correct.
And they will put new cameras in at the stadium.
Correct.
So what, what are we going to do, an upgrade for the cameras?
Some upgrade, as I said, this is just $5,000, $500,000 that everyone needs in our district. However, there are some cameras we definitely need to upgrade and some new cameras as well, which is a new question.
But that's one of the new ninth grade.
No, that's the district one.
District one. Another question, I have flying uniforms that's going to come out of the fund balance. The library, that, oh, we have all the flying uniforms, is that something that we've done every year? Because my knowledge, we might have done that every year. Is that something that we don't?
And, and that's something, um.
And is it all the planes?
No, and I think if you recall last year, and Dr. Edward will be able to correct me on this, it's not all of the planes. My understanding was, uh, to answer your question, my understanding was that we purchased the captain, co-captain uniforms. Not all of the planes, there were some specific uniforms that we did purchase.
Okay, and about what was the price of that? I would have given the information before, and if you're right, I can understand it was the captain and the co-captain uniforms. But I didn't understand that that was every year that we let, so. But I think that this year, now, what happens to the uniforms after, uh, their purchase? Are they at school, are they included after that?
Anytime we, we purchase, they are. But now, I'll say this, the, the two years that I've been involved with it, two or three years, that are not for sure.
Thank you for the four, we did, it was, we, we bought a number of uniforms, it wasn't a specific, uh, number. And we actually just bought some, uh, uniforms for.
For my knowledge, it was, should have been, so you said that.
Well, let me say this, I think, as I said, this is everything that was on the mind, everything we've done in the past. Of course, you understand that we're revamping our extracurricular activities. So once we revamp and figure out exactly what we're going to do, then we're going to come back with that plan, but I want to bring it to you so it wouldn't be a surprise. So I'm not exactly sure at this point, there's no way, as I said, we're revamping.
And what, and the person we go, I was wondering if they're after us, because, you know, year to year, the girls, you know, the girl model, these sex labors. Last year, these girls, these girls, what use for those uniforms going to be to, to us?
I can find out, bring it back to you.
Because they won't be giving, giving, I tell you, I bet you can't.
Now, your uniforms are not mine. I'll find out, so, you can get that with you, I, I couldn't.
And so that was the purchase for the planes, why not cheerlead the sponsor?
That's a good question, and then we can discuss that as we move further.
Uh, trustee, and, uh, trustee Barton and trustee Ambrose.
Yeah, Doc, can we get the, um, I guess, the information back when y'all did the flying uniforms, to see exactly how much it was, the, the cost, all that? And, uh, the party, like, due to four thousand?
I think it was like $20,000 that we actually spent on. That, that was like, that was like two years ago, I think, we were right at $20,000.
Who allows to keep?
No, I don't think they, they give them back.
Can you, can you take into that?
And then clarify it, make sure.
Let me, uh, let me say, let me, can we say this, let me find out exactly, and I know we, Dr. Edward did work with, this is, um, this is code, when, when the, when the original question was asked. Now, uh, we'll go back in history and try to find who paid, yeah, this pool we gave you. I'm not exactly sure about who, uh, or which plane to be purchased, all uniforms for. And, and I would say personally, okay, for the, for the last reason, I know that some parents paid for their children's uniforms themselves. The district did not pay. So I'm not exactly sure of the, um, balance of that. Dr. Barton, I will be back with you on that. As I said, now, we're revamping all of that this year. So it's going to come to something different completely, I'm sure.
Trustee, Ambrose.
Thank you, um, this message is for, excuse me, Ms. James. If I could redirect your attention back to page twelve. Um, increase in dual enrollment costs of approximately $300,000. That's almost four times more than what we're paying now. Why the enormous increase? Actually, Dr. Porter.
Yeah, I can answer that, yes. As we said, to talk to you about the Early College High School. I want to thank Dr. Edward for his work along with Dr. Stretcher and others from Lamar State College. We have dual enrollment, co-enrollment now, uh, which is approximately, well, PAIG. We thank them to pull off their industrial group, they give us $25,000. But the remaining is paid for by the district, so we pick up the entire cost. We're going to still have the co-enrollment for our eleventh and twelfth graders for the 2016-seventeen school year. Next year, we will start the Early College High School program with our ninth graders. This is a program that will, uh, have one hundred, the first one hundred students that will attend Lamar State College in their freshman year and continue through their senior year. At the end of their senior year, they will have completed at least sixty graded hours. It will be a two-track program, a technical track and an academic track. With the academic track, students will graduate and be able to move further into post-secondary. With the technical track, a student will graduate from high school and graduate with an associate degree and be able to move into the career, uh, career field. Uh, at this point, we will have approximately two hundred students in that program. When I say two hundred, I'm talking about, we used to have about a hundred in our co, uh, dual, dual, uh, the dual program at Lamar for the eleventh and twelfth. And we're going to have our first one hundred ninth graders next year. Every year thereafter, we're going to add a hundred and we'll have, uh, at the, at the, uh, I guess, at the ending of the program, we'll have about four hundred, so we can't have more than four hundred. So we're going to keep going. So that is an essential of the increased cost. And we are, and once again, the cost for these students to go to Lamar State College, we are paying for.
And one final question, uh, page thirteen, I believe, the vendor list. Are any of these vendors, porters vendors? I would say, although by looking here, if any of them are in fact, uh, for offer vendors. Um, these are vendors that the district, um, does business with. Um, the istation is the one we talked about, which is, is going to say curriculum, um, software that's purchased. The woodman and brass may be a bowman vendor. Um, I, I cannot tell you specifically if all of these, the Southern Tire Mark, that might be a bowman, you know, bowman vendor, but as far as porters. Uh, I don't know if any of them are. The way we, with these vendors are set up in our system and the way we brought this to you, the information here, is we looked at the spending and how much it's been spent to date. And as you know, on a monthly basis, we bring to you the cumulative spending that exceeds $25,000. So what we're trying to do here is to provide you what we project will go over $25,000 between now and the end of August. Okay, do we aggressively seek porters vendors for paying any of them any, are we doing that?
When you say aggressively.
Uh, in other words, maybe competitively bid or certain.
We definitely, we, we advertise in the, um, portfolios. Um, and we, we go out for bids and as much as we can, um, we, we do that. And I say as much as we can. If there are specific items that are only available through a sole source, then that's the only place you can get it, is from that sole source. For example, uh, Black, Blackboard Connect, I believe that could be a porters.
It is, it is, that, yes.
It could be, it's a question.
It's more the southeast side of the state, they're associated with the same network, so I don't think it's a concern.
Okay, and, and, um, Imagination Station, um, that's probably a, now, I'm, I'm not looking at the details, but I would speculate that's a sole source. Um, woodman and brass, we, we're trying to provide, provide a service to our band department to make sure that they have the instruments that they can repair, get repaired, or if they need additional instruments. There's only a few sources, is there a vendor in porters that provides the service? Okay.
Um, teachers created materials. This one has, what type of vendor and who are the teachers that have created this material? And are.
It's the name of a vendor.
Exactly.
And they, this was, um, vendors that have been sent by our curriculum department. And they are using sources that they feel will assist them and, and do what they need to teach the student, to, to teach the students. So we in the business office would not dictate and say that you should not use the materials that will help us get what we know is the most important thing, is to get those children taught and be able to pass the test.
Okay, thank you. That was your call.
Uh, Dr. Porter, isn't that $300,000 that we have to go over there? Uh, does that include, I know that's probably going to include the additional staff that we're going to have. Do we have a number of how many admin positions that we're going to have, how many extra teachers? I'm not going to say extra teachers, just.
Yeah, uh, and.
I know that's not a part of that $300,000.
No, that is not, the, once again, the program will start in 2016-seventeen. And when Woodrow Wilson is complete with its renovations, then those students will move to the Woodrow Wilson campus. And at that time, there will be a principal, a counselor and teachers. Uh, once again, though, a lot of our, we may, we may be able to use our internal staff for a lot of our, our students. Well, as I said, then, uh, those students will be walking across the street to Lamar State College. So we'll, uh, use that staff as well, utilize Lamar's talent. So we just have to craft all of that, trusty Ambrose.
Uh, one more question, about outsourcing services. Sorry, now, for grounds, uh, the potential that we can add outsourcing, groundskeeping, transportation, and child nutrition.
As I said, when, in, in 2016, and I think the board trustees have asked me to look at everything and understand and come back with suggestions, and that's what we're doing. So, and I will, I will please say that you know there's a lot of the conversations that we're having, which comes up with these ideas. They're hard conversations to have because it affects our people. So we have to really look closely at what we're doing and, uh, try to figure out what the conversation is there. I'm not saying that that is what we're going to do, so we will bring our recommendations to you. And after we've had long conversations about all of this, but it is, it is a source of savings.
Thank you, Dr. Porter, my question, and one of the trustee's often, if we outsource these, down there, we just going to get a stay to these three departments? But would these people be employed by the company, or can we assure that, that we don't lose their jobs or anyway?
Because a lot of those people in groundskeeping, transportation, child nutrition, uh, they depend on that insurance. Uh, if we're going to outsource them, uh, just say groundskeeping, if we outsource the groundskeeper and their company that buys them, uh, don't provide them with insurance, you know, porters, iStation is one of amazing employers.
Correct. Well, let me say this, as, once again, let me repeat, uh, this, these are thoughts, these are discussion items. Anytime we move further into this, if we, when we start investigating, we will figure out and ask those questions. Would our employees be first? Would they be able to stay? Will they, uh, the insurance part of it? We will ask all of those questions before a final determination. Once again, discussion item only right now. If we move further, then we will ask more questions and clarify all, all questions before we make a final decision for our conditions.
Trustee, Billy.
Well, just looking at the groundskeeper, for example, um, and outsourcing, the outsourcing just, could outsourcing just be a means to complete what needs to be done without the member needing to focus in that, in that department?
Okay, now, once again, when we look at certain ideas, we have to put a cost because all of these have a cost to it. We have a cost for groundskeeping right now. If we put an additional outsourced company, that means an additional cost. And is, we, we would still be paying the groundskeeper, as you were saying, you would still be paying the groundskeeper? And you would be paying the individuals that do the extra in what you're talking about. So that's an additional budget item. Where we are at this point, we're not looking at additional budget items. We're looking at what is cost-effective for the district. Now, as we move further, if that is something that we will look into, if we could have two different companies come in, then that would be, we would have to look at the cost for that. Everything, that's why we put it on here, everything has a cost. And we have to ask ourselves, do we want the additional cost?
Well, the motivation here is the shortage of groundkeeper, am I correct?
We do have a shortage of groundkeeper.
So, so at this point, we don't have adequate, uh, employee, appointment to handle all the grounds that we have. So having this as an addition to, it appears will be more beneficial than a replacement of.
What benefit? We will be looking into it further and we will have a side-by-side comparison. And we will have the pros and cons to all scenarios.
Because if you would hire, if the workforce was available, and you hired active workforce to take care of the grounds, as an example, the cost would be an additional cost because that cost will already be figured in budget at the end to pay those people to take care of the grounds. So it's not an additional cost, it is an add to instead of a replacement of. So it's not an additional cost, it is an add to instead of a replacement of others.
Well, okay, let me say this, you use the term add to, anytime you add, that's addition.
Well, in this case, wouldn't necessarily be an addition, it would be, uh, to complete what, what already should be budgeted for. We, we have all these properties that need to be taken care of, and there's X amount of money that requires those properties, okay? So if you, I mean, so, so, if you're getting paid twenty dollars a yard to do a yard, well, you can't do that yard, you can only do the trimming. So now, what does the trimming cost? So now you have to find somebody else to do the mowing, what does the mowing cost? So when you break it down, it shows that it's not going to be an additional cost, it's going to be exactly what we normally would budget for if we had the people in place to do the job first time.
Well, let me, let me try to, uh, restate, make it clear what I'm saying. You're, you're saying, and that is not how we hire. When we look at costs, we're looking at actuals. And you're saying, we, if you budget, uh, twenty dollars for someone to cut the grass and do the, the edging, and they don't do that, then you get somebody to do it with that extra cost. But that's not how the district works. We hire employee A at twenty dollars and expect them to do it all. We don't say employee A, we're hiring you, we're going to give you twenty dollars. You're going, ten dollars is for edging, ten dollars is for grass cutting, it's twenty dollars. Now, when you bring someone else in to do the edging, which employee A has not done for the twenty, you're going to pay the ten for employee B to do twenty plus ten is thirty.
Well, that's not what I'm, what I'm suggesting.
Yeah, but I'm saying, that's what, that's what it is.
We don't have a personnel.
But you, but, but, but when you, but when you budget, you're budgeting for who you have, we don't budget extra. You're budgeting for who you have at the time, we're dealing in actuals.
So in actual, that's why we now, if you go around the campuses, you will see that the grounds are unkept. And that we have later in the discussion to add something, add the grounds that are kept, we would have to, uh, even consider on the discuss. I think the, what we can come up with is, uh, maintenance is an issue. I don't necessarily believe that cutting, uh, the maintenance department personnel and it's going to be, uh, anytime you outsource something, it's going to be a higher cost versus having someone working to get it out. My recommendation, as one of the board members, would simply be, uh, get a man to take care of what we can't take care of, not an addition to, just what we can't take care of, what our physical manpower cannot do. We have to replace that with something, something that can, and that was what I just wanted to clear up, you know, so.
Well, as I said, we, uh, this is just conversation, we're not, there's not anything, uh, permanent on here at all. But I, I go back and say, when you say get someone else to do what we cannot take care of, that's an additional cost. But as, but we're right now, this is all conversation, this is nothing, we're not hiring anybody, we're not hiring, we're not outsourcing tomorrow. So please don't take it to that, I don't want to put it as if we're outsourcing tomorrow, these are all suggestions and conversational pieces. We're not saying we're putting, I want to make that very clear, we're not saying we're firing anybody, we're not saying we're taking anyone's job, we're not saying any of those things. All we're saying is, we're putting this on the table as a discussion item to put down the pros and the cons of all suggestions. And at the end, in August, we will come up with what we need to do to move further.
Okay, Dr. Porter, if, if you can, or if you will, also put this on as a discussion items personally, for me, travels, any more segments that administrators or teachers are getting that don't actually use travel, and a teacher hotline for the district. So if you're not, you know, a process going through the administrators at that particular school or supervisor or whoever, they are able to contact someone on a personal basis of a complaint that they can address. So again, travels, any, uh, site, and again, a teacher hotline for employees of the district. Anything else, trustees?
Just one.
Trustee Billy.
On the practice field, exactly what are we going to be doing? On the, uh, practice field, exactly what renovations are we going to do to the practice field and high school?
Uh, there's a lot of things that you're going to add something, uh, Mr. Arthur, Mr. Short probably, uh, could address at that time, he knows it ends it out. He would come and address both, Mr. Short.
This is the practice field at Memorial High School. It, uh, the ninety-seven thousand for this project is to completely strip it down, redo the curve in the field, not do anything with the sprinkler system, the sprinkler system is fine, and re-saw it, the whole field. Right now, ever since the beginning that it was built, the grass never got started before it was played on. So it's never really rooted, and that was just a timing issues that happened there.
Well, have you thought about aerating the field?
We do it all.
And adding, and adding soil, saw, adding soil, adding soil to it. Aerating is a device that goes through, explodes in the ground, which allows nutrients to penetrate underneath the, the surface enough of the grass and root. And then we come back and fertilize it, kind of, we do a golf course to make it nice and green. And we have, we, because that will seem to be, would be a lot less.
What we had determined was, the sand that was used within that field was river sand. And river sand does not have the nutrients in it, the colder nutrients in it, nor does the root base take it colder.
Thank you, sir.
Trustees. Okay, uh, Dr. Porter.
Next, I'm going to ask Mrs. Chapman to come forward, and we're going to talk to this item. Is, and now, once again, we covered the bid, which is, uh, she did a high dollar, a hundred and eighty, that was asked. And now we're going on to the tracking devices or just your vehicles.
Good evening. So, I'm Mr. Chapman, my question director, this is my assistant, Mr. Edgar Creedo. And we're basically here just to kind of touch on the tracking device that was discussed and, uh, just to compare, prepare and compare it to what we already using and what we have that we have on our yellow fleet, which is our school buses. And with that being said, I'm going to go ahead and show a short presentation. If you have any questions, please feel free to ask me at the end of the presentation. If I don't know the answer, I will surely get the answer for you and get back to you on it. Okay, one of the things that I have here is what we're currently using for tracking device. And right now, we have a hard drive that we put on our school buses. And with this hard drive, we have video and audio footage. We pull the hard drive and we connect it to the computer and we're able to see inside and outside of us. We have front view camera and inside view, and we also have audio, where we be here, where the driver's staying, the students are staying, any activity inside that bus, and in some occasion, outside of us. We have a live technician, where if we have any problems, twenty-four hour support, they're in the office, however, from eight to five. But if we have any problems, we can still call them and reach them. Uh, if there's a problem with the equipment, if there's a breakage or anything, we have the next day's service where they were overnighted to us. Say like at one of the cameras, we call it, it's not working, something wrong with it. Okay, we get them online, then we look at it through our system and see if the problem is in there overnight as they were. What the proposal that we were looking at was wireless, it's like a live track. And what we have now is called past tracking, meaning we have to pull it to R to see what actually happens. So if you call a citizen, someone calling, there's a complaint, we're going to go and pull it and go view it at that hour, that time, that date, and see what the footage holds. With the live tracking system that we look at, it just tracks the location of your vehicle. If your vehicle is at the administration building, in two minutes, it will ping, it's at a different location. But every six minutes, it will send us a reading to what this vehicle has traveled or where it is. But there's no audio, there's no, for his vision and actually seeing movement, just pings. With that, uh, it reports the activity of the property, whether it's heartbreaking, or they accelerating, or they swerving or speeding. It depends on what alerts you want to send to that vehicle that you purchasing for that vehicle to do, to send to us. Uh, so it's several different type of these, it even, it used to have ECM holding it. If there's something wrong with the vehicle, it will send out a code, letting the maintenance crew or us know that, that this vehicle needs to be serviced, something's going on with this code, and we're ready to pull that code and see what that code means. So that's one of the proposals that we were looking at. And then also, that data is stored up to one year on the wireless line. Whereas with the current right now, depending on how often you buy that vehicle, it could store up to three months. But if that vehicle is used three times or four times a day, we, we take it on the regular route, noon day, after school, field trip, the footage is shortened because it's steady rolling over. But if that bus is used on a normal route, just regular route, or just field trips, you can get up at least a three-month downtime on that, uh, box that we're currently using. The comparison I made, uh, was with, on the next pages, was what the upfront cost would be if we went to certain vendors for the, uh, tracking with just the white fleet, we're looking at, uh, through, well, my freight lines, one of the vendors that I did look at. And they wanted, uh, quite a bit of money, and, but their fees, it was for the purchasing of the vehicle, meaning, I'm sorry, the equipment, you purchased it. With AT&T, the upfront cost is much lesser because you're actually leasing their equipment, and then they are maintaining the equipment, and they have assistance where it's, it shoots back to them and let them know, hey, something's wrong with this device, and, uh, they would be the ones to come out and take care of it. Uh, freight liner has to use third party, which is Cisco. And Cisco would be the one who would be leasing the equipment to freight liner, you know, which they will be selling it to the springers like we have now with, uh, Angel Truck. We go through a vendor, we purchase it, and that become our equipment, but they still oversee that it's running properly, and they, uh, help us out with what is getting this up and running, if it needs to be. Uh, if I learned, when I talked to Tata, I did try to contact someone from Tata, Mr. Mark Tru, what's his name? He told me that they could not accommodate what we were looking for us for tracking. Now, I don't know if it's the same company, but I did talk with Tata, and they said they only do perimeter, meaning they could secure our facility, but once that vehicle leave that facility, we no longer could be tracked. And I asked him, did he know any other, you know, that he refers to, because I want to look more into it. So that was what I got from them. I also spoke with, uh, Angel Truck, and they told us that they are able to add equipment to the buses that could do the things for tracking like that, and they can also have other tracking devices. They could do them on white fleet that was not expensive, I was waiting on something from them today. I got them today because I want to look more into this, and they have yet to get back with that because they have to follow the information from what I request and what we're looking for. But, uh, when we're looking at this for the yellow fleets, uh, it shows that the cost, the district decided, all vehicles versus the white, uh, vehicles, and they expect the district with additional annual unbudgeted of around fifty thousand dollars, which has not been budgeted, so it's unbudgeted, and we've got seventy-seven buses, and now twenty-seven dollars a unit for each bus at twelve months, that's for the year, we're looking at close to twenty-five thousand dollars. And if we're doing the white fleets, at seventy white fleets is what the district own right now, with twenty-seven dollars a unit in twelve months, we're looking right at almost twenty-three thousand dollars. So we're looking close to around fifty thousand dollars of unbudgeted cost when we talk about tracking the vehicles in the district. Some of the potential impacts that, um, I should see happen, advantages would be having fuel saving, which would eliminate undriven miles that, you know, that, uh, vehicle might be off a route or detour away from where they're going. So this would save on fuel, however, this would only help with school buses. Because on the white fleet, you never know where those white fleet are going to be sending services and out to. If they're sent out to Woodrow, Memorial, or where, so it all depends on where they're being sent out to do services. Uh, it will reduce idling, you have less idling because, you know, the bus would be, if all the vehicle, if you're sitting too long and while you're sitting, say, at the administration building, I'm just going to use that as a point, for two hours, the bus, our vehicle idling, that is, you know, fuel waste and charge there, so it will reduce that. It'll reduce speeding because it will send a beam, not only to the person at the desk, where it's going to be monitoring this, but to the person driving the vehicle, reminding them, hey, your speed, this is the speed that's set for this vehicle, you're just going to be speeding. Uh, it will improve, uh, maintenance because it would give that adequate record of the dropping of that vehicle, meaning if your all champ is doing three thousand miles, hey, this will give you more adequate miles of knowing, hey, this bus, uh, vehicle need to be serviced. So you get alerts, like I say, whenever it happens, it's in alerts, it's archived, it's saved up to one year, like I mentioned earlier. Uh, it would prevent unauthorized usage, meaning it would track the vehicle where it is and where it is being used, instead of just the vehicle just being taken and just used for your own personal reasons or whatever reason you may be taking that vehicle. But on the downside of those advantages, you also have disadvantages. And with that, the budget, it is an unexpected unbudgeted expense. Uh, you got to think about the potential morale that we may send out to employees or the community, or the funds being delegated wisely. Maybe some questions should, you know, some people are like, maybe this here would toward my salary, because, you know, we all here where we have complaints about that. Uh, additional staff would be needed to monitor this stuff because it would be an additional management, uh, responsibilities, as well as you would need someone to monitor these, monitor this at all times to get the reports, the field reports that is, uh, idling reports, speech reports, some of the things that talk to the distance, the moving time, the mission status, different reports that are being sent out. So, uh, if we decide to go with GPS tracking, that's just some of the disadvantages and advantages that I was going to come up with at this time. So, any questions, officer?
Trustee Billy.
Yes, thank you very much, but my question is, will the vehicle operator have the capability of turning the GPS off?
No, no, ma'am, well, they, they would not.
Trustees, trustee, uh, Porter.
Well, I can agree with you said on that, uh, my job, uh, is ambrosial. I have that in my work front, and it's, it keeps me alert. If I go past a white line on the right or left, it beams and blinks. If I'm five, a few seconds in front of a car, but my stopping, braking distance is in jeopardy, it, it goes off, and that is a very good, uh, thing. And, and like I said, I, I've had it, I go five miles over speed limit, it goes off and let me know. So it's a good tracking device that this system can use.
Yeah, that was very important, I appreciate that. I could also, with Mr. Porter, uh, the savings that is going to bring to the district is where all may be expenses. And that may be still a little bit too high because the number of companies to track.
Okay.
And I have the information in mind, there's no upfront cost for those folks, and they owe twenty-five dollars a month, uh, fee, monitoring fee, and they provide you with the equipment. So, so give them a holiday, tell them I need that information because I, I think we're on the right track. Uh, accountability and transparency is what we want, so we send this message to the community, is letting them know that we are doing, being good stewards over there, of their, uh, investment in us. So I think this would be a plus for the district as well, once we can implement this on our papers. Uh, as far as, uh, employee morale, uh, you said the potential, well, the potential here is, if you're doing what you're supposed to do, this is not going to affect you at all, this is going to help you. And it's motivating, I believe, uh, Mr. Porter, uh, said, it helps him, it keeps him alert. So there are some, some plus sides to this, uh, which I'll weigh the negative. So I think we had the regulation that I do, appreciate your time, uh, look into this for us, thank you very much.
Okay, uh, trustees. Dr. Porter.
Thank you both for coming. Other can law, board members, please ask staff before.
Okay, thank you, Dr. Porter. Uh, next is the group of names, February twenty-fifth, and I'm willing to step down.
So move.
May I say?
Yes, sir.
Any questions? Any questions, special? Just a correction?
Yes.
Yeah, we have a question. Okay, all events, do you want to say an hour?
Uh.
Those opposed? The next February twenty fifth, twenty fifteen is passed. Next is the consent agenda. The following items which are routine and recurring nature have been designated as consent agenda items by the board president, board policy, union. All the items of the consent agenda will be handled by board vote without being discussed separately unless requested by a trustee. In which case, items will be regarded as being considered. And the trustee requests after the items, not required separate discussion, had it had a bar. Trustees, we have one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, ten, eleven, twelve, thirteen, the consent agenda. Trustees?
Uh, Mr. President. I would pull item number eight.
Eight. Trustees? Okay. If there are no others, we'll be voting on consent agenda items only, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, nine, ten, eleven, twelve, and thirteen. Now, the motion accept those consent agenda items. So move, have a second. If there are no further questions, only these items, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, ten, eleven, twelve, thirteen. We're, we're not doing, we're not doing. All, all the votes, do you want to say an hour?
Uh, I.
Any opposed? Those consent agenda items have passed. Trustee Gil, I am made.
I agree. Uh, Dr. Porter, uh, would you give a little more, can we, can we, trustee?
Need a motion, need a bell.
Can I, can I have a motion for I made on board?
I don't know.
Have a second, sir.
Second.
Trustee Gil.
Dr. Porter, do you, uh, do you have anything on, on this item?
Yes. Um, I think last board, uh, I don't know, last board meeting, trustee Paulson asked us to bring back more information. And so I'm going to ask Mr. Jackson to come forth and present to us what he has found.
You'd like to, general members? As um, as Thomas asked, I went back and did some, some more research and trying to find like she asked for other options. So on today, we have um looked in and did a lot of research to find out what are our best options or what other options can we do for these two schools, uh, Sam Houston and Travis. One of the options is still the original request where we put in the new switches in Sam Houston and Travis so that we can hook up our telephones and our Wi-Fi and get that campus on the same level as all the other schools that we have in the district. Now, the equipment, if you get the equipment and put the equipment in the building, the technology department can move the equipment when a new building is built. Uh, my brother. For an example, this is the equipment we're looking at. This equipment sits in a rack with two screws here. And it has a cable that plugs in that goes into a patch panel. All we have to do in the department is come in and unplug these, this vice, unscrew the screws and pull it out and bring it to the new building, put it in, screw it in and plug the cables into the new side because all the cabling and all the other things would be done on the other side with, with the vendor that cables the building. Because that whole building would need to be cabled. Okay? That, that, this device also will power our, our new telephone system. This telephone system is, is the same situation. It's a plug back here that it plugs into that runs all the way until our M D F closet that plugs into that patch panel which we plugged this into. Now, the, the thing about this also is with these new telephone system, it requires to have one plug. So we're in, like in Sam Houston, we'll be able to plug that device into the wall and then plug the computer for the teacher into the phone and they get that data. So now, you talk about our wireless. We bring the wireless in. The wireless is the same situation. It's a cable that's, that's already in the building. That we can take, in classrooms, they got at least two jacks in there. What we can have our vendor do is take, take that jack, take it loose from the wall where it's currently at, move it up to the ceiling. Same difference, you plug it in and because of this particular switch it gives it power, everything runs. Okay? For that, and this is the same thing, once the building is ready to be uh torn down, we come, unplug it, bring it over to the new building, the cable already be ran because it's the new building, plug it, does a bracket that goes with it and it hangs. Okay? Now, this equipment has, like you said, it's going to come with a seven year warranty, which um most of the time I found out from talks that most equipment like this, they only give you five years. But we negotiate another two years with those, with Cisco. All right? Um, and then, like I said, we want to put this wireless in there because for one, we've already, we've already um purchased tablets and it will allow us to use those tablets so the kids can use the tablets in the classroom and it can help assist the teachers with supplemental learning and, and using iStation and think through math and different programs that we currently have already. Uh, so it um avoid um implementation delays. Uh, it avoid potential cost of additional devices once the facilities are, are available. Because we buy it now, we don't have to buy it later, we have it for later, okay? And then also, when we talked to Cisco and, and got this particular bid from our vendor we got it from, Cisco gave us some special pricing. And that special pricing is for limited time. So the next time we have to go back in two or three years later for it, it may be a higher cost then.
Well, I'm going to say this, Mr. Jackson, but you put this boy to disadvantage because your planning or whoever was at your planning table thought the same way this boy did when it uh, uh, when you thought these schools were going to be built in the time we had it, like you discussed last and before again. Now, we're basically making a decision for price of this amount for technology upgrade along with Wi-Fi and telephone system. And if we don't do it now, the price may go up. But that puts this boy into disadvantage because now we basically making a quick decision based upon your team or whoever in your department didn't make the planning or go through this planning process. Uh, to be more clear, we want our kids, and I believe that we want our kids to have this, this Wi-Fi. I, I want you guys to have communication where we can all communicate with each other effectively. But we're looking at, as the board member, we have to take advantage of building best for this district when we own these high level items. And this is what we talked about early today.
Yeah, but this high level, this item here can work in both when we realize new school, we're gonna need it for the new schools anyway because that's one of the, um, bond items that has already been approved that we need to upgrade our network equipment. And this is what we're doing, upgrading our network equipment. And we also had on the bond to get Wi-Fi, we also had on the bond to get telephones. And we're gonna just upgrade it and then move it to the new building when the new building is built. We don't have to purchase this stuff once the new building is built, we already have it.
And any questions, trustee? Trustee, I'm open.
Mr. Jackson, thank you very much. But the last time you stood before us, I asked you specifically if this decision was yours and yours alone. I'm going to ask again, you're one hundred percent certain that you will be able to move this equipment out of the old building and into the new building? There's not going to be any added cost? Discover is going to allow your department to do that, even though this equipment will still be under warranty?
Yes.
Is that correct?
We, I've, I've talked to, and I've been here for five years. I've talked to some employees we have who have been here twenty years or so. And they have men- mentioned to me that when um the Queen was built, they moved those, that equipment to the huts and they moved the equipment back into the Queen. When um the administration was built, they moved the equipment to the administration building.
Yeah, but there wasn't, I know what you're talking about, but there wasn't a whole communication system that we're doing district wise. We're, we're talking about a communication system district, district wide.
Not, not, the, um, the telephone system and stuff like that, that's not through Discovery, that's through another company. And that, and the, the way that I, I don't have, because it's all in, in place, the telephone system is similar to this. It can be moved also. The new telephone system we have is similar to this and it can be moved also. It's not like the old days when it's this big box type thing by the big, this, staying right here, it's not the same anymore, it's a lot smaller now.
And you're, you're guaranteeing that once the new school is built, you will have any upgrades uh within the next, I guess, two years when the school's been built? That we might have to pay for any upgrades?
When you say upgrades?
Um, just say the phone system or the Wi-Fi.
That's covered in the warranty.
All of it be covered in the warranty.
Yeah, upgrades for hardware and things like that, that's covered in the warranty for seven years. And that's one of our problems right now with our current phone system is that the warranty that was bought back then is not covered anymore. So now, anything that we have to do to that phone system, we have to pay for it. I mean, like I mentioned in the last meeting, we had a system go down, we had to get a part of it to, like a day and a half today to get. Costs around fifteen thousand dollars. Now, if we, and just, just uh probably like a month ago, we, well, not about two weeks ago, we had an issue with voicemail system on the old system. And we couldn't get it back up at first and then we finally was able to, it was locking up, it restarted, it would lock up. We couldn't, we were working with it and they finally got it to come back up and work. But if for some reason that old equipment from that phone system goes down, that, those two schools would not have their voicemail capabilities anymore.
Trustee agree, trustee toss.
Thank you for this new information, Mr. Jackson. The last time spoke, I asked you for the cost of temporary solutions and the cost for a temporary solution for the station, do you have that data?
Yes. I hear we have a, a second option that we could use that will get the job done temporarily, but it's going to be a cost. Um, we're looking at you, the telephones, it also has a power plug on it. So you can buy adapters and plug it into a wall so that, you know, they have to have power and plug it into a wall so the teacher would have to have a, a surge or if they don't have enough power, it has to be next to a power um jack. These, the Wi-Fi devices, we, it wouldn't be cost effective to run power in ceilings to these Wi-Fi devices. So there's these things called power injectors. We would have to buy those and what happens is you plug those into the box in front, in front of the cable here and it gives it the power, but it sends, you have to do it inside your M D F idea and it sends the power via cable to this to give this power to work. Now, those power injectors, um, also would have to have some housing because you don't want them just hanging everywhere. And because it's, you, you know, I think um Sam Houston is probably like, probably around fifty of these. I mean, that's fifty power injectors that have to be plugged in because they're individualized. And now you have fifty plugs that need to be plugged in, so you may need some more electrician to come in and do some more electrical workforce.
And this is the only equipment that we could possibly use, the temporary solution?
Yes, with the current, with, with the switches and things we currently have in place now, that's the only thing we can find in front of our research that we could use to get the phones and the Wi-Fi ready.
Now, currently, it's one of, we, we do have Wi-Fi, we still have little pub today Wi-Fi. But the children do have access to internet and Wi-Fi at school.
No, the only Wi-Fi.
They do not?
But we have Wi-Fi, we have Wi-Fi in the office area and we have Wi-Fi in some of the auditorium areas and maybe cafeterias, but it's not over the, of those two schools.
But the children are able to get on the internet?
If they go in the office?
You, you don't have. I don't have your computer lab.
Well, it's picking up from the office, so it's not a strong signal.
But they have computer labs and they have computer equipment.
But we're talking about the kids being able to use these tablets inside of the classroom with their teachers.
Okay, so it's, but currently for their curriculum, activities that they do on daily, they are able to use their computers and their tablets. Are they not? We do have portable computer class, like the choir, we got thirty computers on it?
I wish they did.
We do have that, they do have access to internet and Wi-Fi at this time. We couldn't not know.
We, we have the carts, but they can't use it because there's no Wi-Fi in the classroom.
But they do have, okay. So some of the equipment, laptops, computers that we have on the portable carts are not being used. Do the children have access to internet and Wi-Fi when they need it?
I, I went to um Travis yesterday. And um, you know, because this concerns me and I know we've talked about it and I appreciate everybody on the board carrying out your responsibility, all of us carrying out responsibility. As a trustee, we give steward taxpayer dollars, but anyway, I went to Travis yesterday. And um, first of all, Travis, you only have Wi-Fi access if you go to the office or if you go to Ms. Lofton's classroom back there. However, these tablets that we voted to approve the spending, they are still in boxes. They're sitting in the closet, I personally witnessed them with Ms. Lofton. Are they in the uh carrel that I went with Mr. Jackson, correct, Mr. Jackson, the library?
Yes.
And I did speak to the principal and, you know, she, uh, and, you know, with me being in the business as well as administrator and a former teacher, uh, she told me what I thought was happening over there and that it does affect preparation and planning. The teachers have a domain on their T test to show usage of technology in their preparation and planning. They are limited. The students at Travis and Sam Houston, they don't have the same type of academic equity as the students at the other schools in our district simply because they don't have campus wide Wi-Fi. The purpose of the tablets is not for them to go to Ms. Lofton's classroom or to the main office and you're not getting much of a penny in the library. The purpose of those tablets is to use them in their classroom, at their desk as part of, you know, their instructional plan for the day. But the teachers can't even do that, so what concerns me is that, it, it concerns me if, if I were a parent who had a child at this school, it would concern me if I were a teacher at this school, it would concern me if I were administrator. Is that these kids have to have the same type of opportunity to be successful. And they don't have that right now at those two schools. And that's why I'll definitely be voting in favor to spend this money right now. By the way, may I remind all of you, we've got some waste going on in that we have tablets, but they're not being used. We bought a software program for the administrators to do walkthroughs, if I'm correct, Dr. Porter.
And tablets for them?
And they can't use them, so that's being wasteful. If we went with option two here, we're being wasteful.
You don't waste very little of the waste, it's not going to be a waste.
Well, option two will be a waste, in my opinion, Tracy, because um we're spending over a hundred thousand dollars extra when we can just spend this money right now because it's in the line, we're going to be spending it. And you know, um, this really and truly is, is one of these issues where you do it for kids. These kids have to have equity in their academic opportunities at Travis and Sam Houston. And right now, they do not have it. The teachers do not have the opportunity to be as successful as they would like to be because they don't have Wi-Fi. And so, you know, by the time, that's, I'll, I'll, I'm sorry for elaborating, but it's really important to me. Um, you know, if we're not going to give them what they need by the time that they live in the new building two years from now, you know, those tablets may be antiquated and just a waste of money. And.
And we spent sixty three thousand dollars on those tablets that's just sitting there, that's just the ones for the students, that's not counting the ones we purchased for the teachers. And, and then with the phones, we spent thirty five thousand dollars on these phones that would be just sitting there if we don't do something. And so we're looking at another hundred thousand dollars that would just be sitting there if we didn't.
Oh, I'm going to be cautious, I want you to be cautious about what you're saying in the price of the amount because I would say again, in your plane, with your department, who anticipated these schools or whoever was the director at the time, anticipated these schools being built to put those new items that you ordered and we approved into the school. So it's not your board's fault that those things are still sitting in those locations.
Now, we did, we didn't have these on the board agenda items when we started, that's why they are now because we didn't know. because we didn't know when the school is gonna be built and we, like you say, we did not wanna spend money on putting stuff in that building.
You, you were the same impression as this board was that those schools were gonna get this new stuff put in and not getting have, having to be put in the whole school.
We didn't know when the new schools were gonna be built. So we didn't wanna spend the money just in case the new schools get built, then we won't be just putting it into that school.
Yeah, yeah, um, Mr. Jackson, uh, we definitely appreciate, uh, what you per, uh, what you brought to us. And of course, uh, we do understand that when we're trying to make decisions on how to purchase, how to tie certain things. And as I, I think I, I told this to Dr. Kenlaw, um, when we make a, a plan to do something, when we do the A B C and we plan out situations, uh, there comes a time that maybe we come up to a certain date and we figure out that there's a better way to do something. Uh, if you recall, I know the new board members would not recall this, but if you recall, when the bond was passed, we, the initial plan was to demolish the two new school, the two schools, Sam Houston and Travis, and we were going to build a portable city in the back of Thomas Jefferson. So at that time, that was how we planned to move the, uh, technology in those portals and be able to transfer them. Of course, we knew that we would transfer them from the portals to the new building. But at, once again, at that time, Sam Houston and Travis would have been demolished. But as we went forward, we looked at, we'd been put slightly two million dollars for portals. We went out there for bids, it went about six, seven billion dollars. So it was impossible for us to do that, so then we had to relap. And we planned what was best for students and of course, cost. So then, when you plan, uh, when your plan changes, then you can change the technology, you can change everything. How do you maneuver and go on? So, I, I, I'm really, I'm gonna say that I don't think Mr. Jackson did anything or the department did anything that was, um, against. We were just, kind of all of us talking, we planned to make sure that we do things properly. And when you look at, you look at finances and you look at what's best for children.
So, as I was talking about before you, you told me that there is a portable cart that has about thirty computers, right? And thirty computers on that cart, how many carts at each school?
Six at the elementary level?
Six at the elementary level throughout the schools, okay. So, it's a portable, it's a portable computer lab. So, why can't I, if it's a portable computer lab, right? Why can't we purchase wifi that goes mobile with the computers? Why doesn't it have to be, um, permanent in the building? Why can't, why can't each, it's not, each child doesn't have a computer and a tablet at their disposal every day? There's a mobile app and I'm sure, as I can remember, that teachers have a lot of day that they, they request for computers and it goes to, uh, classroom with the teachers and the students. So why can't it be a mobile wifi that goes along with this mobile computer lab? Why does it have to be a permanent hookup in this building? And I'm sure that cost will be significantly less than what we're trying to secure the hundred twelve thousand dollars. And it's only six, do I have the element or not? So, can you elaborate on that?
Okay, um, that, that was one of our thoughts, that, that we looked at the past and when we've done portable laptop things in the past, um.
But it is portable?
Yeah, we've done it in the past and we, these devices have disappeared. They've gotten broken, they've lost power, that was to them.
It's broken, what do you expect?
If it's in the ceiling, we don't have to worry about it.
But it's a ceiling that's going to be permanent?
It's not a permanent deal, we can take it down.
If it's a temporary mobile cart, why, you said it's like.
Mobile cart is not temporary.
It doesn't exist.
Let me say this, and, I think the, and, and with your hands.
Every person has something of reason why we can't. Everything has been put at the table, so there's a, why we can't?
Well, I think what, um, when it was looked into and investigated, and I think your original question last boardman, board meeting was that it was going to be an extra cost.
We can't have this children live on?
Well, I, look, okay.
With temporary solution?
With temporary solution, and I think Mr. Jackson has brought the temporary solution. However, as I said, I think your original question was the excess cost. Now, the, the, the summarize and the bottom line is if you purchase this, these items now, is one cost, and you transfer with no cost, anytime you do something temporary, it's going to be a cost of a hundred thousand dollars extra. So it's four hundred thousand plus the hundred thousand. So I think the concern initially was the extra cost and we're telling you how we can get away from spending an extra hundred thousand dollars.
And, and another solution is that he bought it. But he just said that they've tried that before, he said those things be broken. Is that the only reason possible that we can't have a router or that equipment? That transports with, that transports with the mobile computer lab? It can be bolted down where it won't break or fall off, you know, it can be?
Yeah, they, they were bolted down too. And we still had problems with them in the past. But we can put a device like this on it, but I know for this particular device that we get in here.
But we can't hold it down where it still won't get broken and fall off the car?
We, we have bolted them down and, and, but this, it, because the way it's mounted here, you have, there's different things you can do to do it, but you can't do that. But I know for this particular model here, I talked to my networking people and we talked to Cisco about it because when we originally got those three for every campus a while back, they wanted to make one mobile. We could not make it mobile because the way these switches work, they have to be programmed for whatever port is going to be, these old switches have to be programmed for whatever port is gonna have a wifi device on it. So, if you move from one room to another, you have to go make sure that that particular port is being used for this particular device. The new switches, it has a different type of technology now to where you program, it doesn't matter which you plug in there, a computer, a phone, a wireless device, it, it knows what it's on there and picks it up.
I want this, this public to know that all children needs are being met. Contrary to what sounds like your, all children needs are getting met with wifi and internet right now. It is not at this particular school, it may not be, um, the best wifi and internet service that's out there, but the needs are being met and it's not like there's a computer for each child. There's mobile computer labs that open to each classroom on a day per days per week, you know, so the needs are being met.
Thank you.
We're not trying to lose them.
Thank you, trustee Thomas, trustee Gilbert.
Mr. Jackson, I, I agree with you, our kids need this wifi access. My other problem more likely is it's the spin of the technology that compared to to be broke. Come on, listen, have, have a upgrade. Now, I'm sitting here looking at multiple devices. That blue data cable you have right there, that's a data cable that will send the same signal to this device right here, which will generate a wifi signal, which will allow those mobile carts that you have to operate. Why haven't we, we have two hundred eighty-nine dollars? How many did you say we had, six? Six times two hundred eighty-nine dollars. Unlimited access, unlimited connectivity. And the speed access of that T one line, the data cable you have there, is not a problem for those, uh, computers and tablets to be, uh, functioning, uh, for those kids. This is another option, and it just took me five minutes to pull it up. Why, why aren't we looking at a hundred, a hundred twelve, this appears to be more as a deterrent and encouragement to spend four hundred forty-two thousand dollars, which I feel is unnecessary when the phone lines that we currently have are operable, we don't know when they're gonna go out, if they're gonna go out. As far as the wifi, here's an option, case resolved. Add it to reduce costs until the new schools are built, where we can have this new equipment placed in those schools and we still utilize those laptops that are currently in those schools today. Just by looking at other options like this one.
We were, we're looking at the total picture with the phones and the wifi.
Well, we don't need the phones, the phones are operating.
Kind of, yes, they are, but when they go down, it's like if, if they go down.
If and when, that's how I say it, if and when. When I sit down and talk with Dr. Porter Reed, who's like, uh, the other department hand, uh, from your department, and the common denominator at that point was whether or not we had wifi, not having wifi. So we can utilize it, we can purchase, I'll give you another lot of options so we can utilize that equipment. Here it is. What I, what I'm suggesting is come back with something better than four hundred forty-two thousand or a hundred and twelve thousand, where they still keep these in our schools until we get into the new building. That equipment is gonna be outdated, it's gonna have to have upgrade technologies, regardless of what you said, the warranty is. And for two years and five years left on it, it's gonna, when we implement it, it may be upgraded at that point. The issue here is how many of those telephones will be damaged, broken, and have to be replaced over the next two years because of the, uh, that way. Well, the warranty, exactly. So, it doesn't make a whole lot of sense to go through that expense, but it's time until the schools are built. You said we're gonna spend the money anyway, well, what you spending then? And as far as the discount is concerned, I'm sure based on technology and the competition that's out there, they'll be just as good a price then as it is today. Somebody wants to sell their equipment, they're gonna cater to us and give us what we need, or somebody else will.
Well, the, the reason that we got, uh, for our understanding, the reason, one of the reasons we got this special pricing is because how much we were purchasing it. But now it would, it would be significantly reduced because we won't be purchasing as much as we're purchasing now.
We already spent two million dollars.
Yeah.
Honest?
No, it's two, over two million now.
The whole project was, was, uh.
Uh, Porter Reed?
We spent two point nine million in this, in this addition to that two point nine million because these.
I mean, this is on totally everything you're talking about, okay, yeah, yeah, yeah. I, I was, I was just thinking about just one part of it.
No, we, we already spent, we already approved two point two million dollars. And you.
Well, it's kind of with, with the bond was approved for us, we, we, we later did that.
Trustee Reed? I, I just wanna say one more time, I'm, I'm a little, uh, confused by some of the things we're talking about here. This four hundred forty-two thousand dollars, we're gonna spend two years from now, we're gonna spend it now. So, sixteen seventeen, seventeen eighteen, they're still in their building at Travis Inter. I mean, excuse me, Travis and Sam Houston. And based on what I observe, what I know from being in the business, these kids at those two schools are not receiving the same type of resources that they need. This is my opinion, I'm not gonna change my mind about it because I know I'm in the business, I'm used to being evaluated on this. I would feel very bad as a principal of either one of these schools if my students do not have the same type of academic equity in terms of resources that is there at the other schools in the school district. We have an opportunity to do it, he can buy the switches, he can install them, and then they take them out, same switches, no extra cost, and put it into the new buildings. The kids have what they need. We're asking them to get by bare minimum compared to what the other students at the other campuses have. And that's why I feel so strongly about this because if I were in the situation of the principals at Travis and Sam Houston, I would feel like my hands would be tied behind my back, same with the teachers, in order to give my students everything that they deserve to have in order to be successful. As taxpayers, all of our taxes go toward these schools to provide these children with resources. But we, but it's just my opinion, I mean, it's my opinion, and really, I don't think it's my opinion, I just think it is what it is. You know? We can just move forward with this and give them what they have to have, and then when we open these two buildings, we've already bought it. It moves in, nobody said we're gonna go ahead and wait and spend an extra, well, this is one, just let me talk please, but we're gonna spend an extra one hundred and who knows how high it could go, you know, and have them wait for the resources that they, really, they should have right now. And the money's there, it's funny, extra money, it's in the line. Well, let me do this, and if we approve this, Dr. Porter Reed, by having assistance on these tablets and wifi, would that improve the grades at those particular schools? Yes or no?
I cannot answer when you ask grades. I can answer the, the question, I, I can answer, yes, if it would, if it were delivered to me. If it would improve the academics, the delivery of the curriculum to those students, the answer is definitely yes.
Okay, thank you, Dr. Porter Reed, at this time, at this time, we will take the all in favor to signify by saying aye.
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 Those both?
Aye.
Aye.
Yeah, I do again, uh, trustee Reed, all in favor to signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Those both?
Aye.
Okay, we got one, two, and I'm three. So trustee, again, my count is trustee Barti, trustee Reed, trustee, uh, Lofton, and trustee Ambrose, so that, uh, item number eight is passed.
Thank you.
Okay, uh, personnel, Dr. Porter?
Um, let's spell, do each one or all together? Okay, each one.
Yeah. Well, you can do it together, we just need you to read.
Okay, we, okay, um.
You can do one motion.
So you wanna do one motion or all?
Yeah, you do one. I just need him to read it.
Okay.
You can make it one.
Okay, Dr. Kenlaw, I, well, look, Dr. Kenlaw, I am recommending the importance of teachers that you have for your, um, for your consideration.
Trustee, we've got, uh, certification in the executive session, uh, and that's gonna be considered appropriate approval, uh, for our teachers. Also, approval, uh, non-renewal, uh, probationary contracts, approval, which are of course, probationary status, uh, approval, renewal, probationary contracts, as well as, uh, approval, proposed non-renewal, term contracts, approval, renewal, uh, term contract for professionals, and approval, renewal, uh, term contract for administrators. Any questions, trustee? Any question? Okay, trustee Thomas. That's good. Okay. Trustee Thomas, you, you're okay? Are you okay? Well, well. All right, uh, man of motion to accept personnel report provided by the superintendent of schools, uh, the items that I agreed earlier, man of motion.
So.
Second, all in favor to signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Those both?
Aye.
We got, uh, polls, it's trustee Barti, trustee Thomas, trustee Lofton, descend and votes. And approval, raise your hand please, we got a count, trustee Reed, trustee Kenlaw, trustee Ambrose, trustee Gilbert. Personnel report is, uh, passed. Okay, information superintendent.
Yes, um. As most of you know, we have a a severe of these power variations today, specifically with our young children, uh elderly age. As indicated here, the playgrounds are not being kept as they should. And and we have a responsibility to ensure that these students get everything academically and physically that that they need uh for future growth. I am, I wanna revisit the idea because this came about initially before we got on the board, but it's important that we consider, we do not want to neglect our children, what they really need in their world. So what I'd like to do is um obviously see this go through, but before that, I wanna know that the playgrounds are properly maintained, um because from what I have observed, there are some playgrounds at some schools that are having kept. We wanna make sure that the playground is safe for the children, and by doing so, they need to maintain, be maintained on a continuous consistent basis. Um, that's what I'd like to see. And if we're not going to come together as a board tonight to vote this in, then I wanna make sure that we have a good plan in place to make sure that from this point forward, the playgrounds are kept, they're maintained, where the students can have access and be the full benefit of it.
If you would, um, and we do, we have, um, we put some things together for you to consider if you would like to talk about the playground and what um service that we're looking at, so I'll ask Mr. Richard to come and he can talk.
Well, I'm on the uh, I'm the boy liaison for a week. And uh just before the spring break, uh they put a sign up. I think the government came in, said the playground was not playable because it didn't have mulch. They didn't have uh, and it wasn't because it wasn't kept up, because the stuff that they have at the bottom that should be mulched is torn apart and considered to be harmful to these three and four-year-old kids.
Correct, and it and it is, and they, we have guidelines uh for the playground, as you're saying, uh, this is Ambrose, and we we are liable if those uh if those playgrounds are not at the park. So, Mr. Richard, if you come briefly and talk about.
Okay, we uh we had attempted to put this on the board agenda about four months ago. It was asked to be taken off. Uh, we were asked to do it again the following month. And uh it got to the point to where they're to the condition to where they were prior to spring break. I had to make a decision on my own. Uh, of course, as you may be aware, that our safety and compliance regulatory officer is ill. Uh, so I went ahead and made a determination on my own because of the safety factor of the lack of cushioning in the fall zones, which is the mulch. Now, the reason I brought this to the board, we did a lot of determinations and evaluations of what types of products are available as a cushioning device. Uh, there's wood, which is what we currently have on the majority of our campuses. On a lot of our newer facilities, we do have rubber mulch. In the long term and the warranty factors that are involved with the rubber, that's what we decided to bring to you. Uh, this is gonna be a district-wide uh project. And I'm not sure exactly what campuses Dr. Kenlaw mentioned that are on your agenda item. But Travis is is taking off, but Cheryl is added on.
And why was Travis taken off?
Travis was taken off, and after visiting with the principal of Travis, the existing playground area is in the construction zone of the new school. So everything in that area has got to be demoed to begin our new construction. And she felt like at this time during this phase, that they can do things on the basketball court for a playground activities during this construction time.
Trustees? Trustee, uh, trustee Lofton.
Oh, sorry, thank you, Jim. Uh, just real quick on you too, on uh, Ms. Ambrose, I totally agree with you. And uh, I was gonna say what what Mr. Lofton already said, that, you know, it's not only what you had said, but we also face a huge liability issue with the playgrounds. But um, are we able, is the plan to keep the playgrounds uh gated, or are we gonna allow the public to have access? Um, which it, you know, since it's taxpayer dollars, I don't mind the public having access to the playgrounds. But I think it leads to a concern that Ms. Ambrose has in terms of the maintenance of them over the years because, you know, obviously they get more wear and tear from the public. And Ms. Ambrose, then that leaves what you're talking about, it it, I mean, we have to be fair to our maintenance folks, it leads to them having it not only maintained for schoolchildren, but schoolchildren. And again, not that I don't mind it because it's taxpayer dollars and I don't mind the public having access, you know, but it's it's an issue for you, another one.
Um, trustee Reed, and I agree with you, and of course, we wanna be hospitable to our community. However, we when we look at playgrounds, we look at the schools and how we're progressing to our schools, we're looking at safety. And the majority of those playgrounds will be gated in. As the schools of Adams, Washington are now, gates will be around the perimeter of those schools. So we will have the playgrounds in there.
Any other question, trustee Gilbert?
I I do agree that the children's safety, it should be our most important. But I don't know if uh rubber mulch is the answer because everyone knows that the rubber mulch is a recycled byproduct of used tires. And there's no fact that the used tires have chemicals. And uh, there's no inconclusive test that says that the kids may not uh become ill because of the use of this. But it has been stated that soccer players who have gotten rash off of ashtray or turf, uh, it's a safety thing, rubber used uh being suggested here uh for our playgrounds for our three- and four-year-olds. So, what is it, carcinogenic, which has uh this this element of chemical in that type, which could cause cancer, potential cancer. Uh, I don't know, we looked at, I I believe that the wood mulch will be a better fix with the least amount of risk or exposure, as far as I say to my children out there, so. I'm just putting it out there, we may need to look at, and this is one of the reasons why, one of the main reasons why the item was pulled before, uh, just not enough information about the product, uh, how uh it's going to help us or hurt us in our community. And again, I agree that safety is an issue. And I understand with a kid that it's unfortunate, film broke his arm. If you put a mattress under that item, it's possible the child will still broke his arm, it's unfortunate. But I just don't know if this mulch is the answer or solution to our problem, long-term problem. Uh, maintenance is an issue. Uh, everybody knows that you have to weed your flower bed. These playgrounds are no different, whether you put down the uh, what do you call this, roll uh fabric, you put down, it's supposed to keep the weed back. Maintenance still has to be done. If you go to our schools, and I have invited each and every one of you here today, go visit the schools, see for yourself, and you'll see that there's been no attempt other than a weeding to maintain those facilities. So I'm not for spending additional money on a project, especially which which I believe in the last one was a hundred forty-seven thousand dollars up to a hundred seventy-seven. I might be wrong on that number, but I just remember it being a lot less. I'm not for spending that money uh for this particular product. I am in favor of spending money for anybody that I believe that it will be safer for our children. And wood mulch, in my opinion, uh is a safer bet than the rubber mulch.
This is uh, Richard, before you answer, let me um assure the community that anytime we embark on something that our children are coming in contact with, it is childproof to our, to what we know. We're not gonna put anything down that we know or think that will harm our children, not knowing. Now, I'll say this, when we were coming up, we played with everything, and we didn't get sick. Today, children have allergies to everything, and you bring them out, they're allergic to grass, they're allergic to air, they're allergic to water, they're allergic to everything. So if you if you didn't put something down, and you tell somebody it's gonna be allergic to it, they would be in a hole because they, our children are allergic to everything. But of course, we look and make sure, because we have guidelines. We are a governmental agency, we have guidelines, and we ensure that, ensure that our students are safe if we possibly can make it.
Question? Question?
Lord, trustee Amber.
Is it possible for you to maybe prepare um a presentation for the next uh board meeting that could possibly um reduce the overall cost? Uh, if you could just see maybe one or two more options?
I have plenty of options that I have gone through already. Those are not my recommendations because of the cost. Now, if you wanna cost out the difference and and to piggyback back onto what uh Mr. Gilbert mentioned, there are companies out there that are making great living selling this rubber product. They're not getting sued because it's in, it's not safe for these children. There are guidelines that playground mulch has to go through and meet before they attempt to go onto a playground, a public playground. Uh, wood mulch versus rubber mulch, there's a whole list of things that you can go on internet and read. Uh, the, there are some items on there that indicate on a ten-year period, you're gonna save about two point eight million dollars in this district because of the square footage or the tonnage that our playgrounds have associated with only the campuses that are listed on this item. There are several campuses that are not listed on this item. But due to the cost of the rubber, today's cost, tonnage cost of the rubber and the uh and the wood.
And I, I'm pretty sure that when Travis School get built, they're gonna use rubber mulch in the playground.
Yes, sir. And Sam Houston.
Yeah.
Yes, sir. Both playgrounds, two or three playgrounds at Travis and Sam Houston, because there's gonna be also an eighty-eight.
Well, Mr. Richard, uh, I, this particular item, I really have concerns about because of the playgrounds uh that I personally along with other trustees visited that was unkept, that have mulch, that have wood, that have a mat, that have a separate area between the mulch and and uh the wood. However, grass is grown through those, and for a long period of time, that takes a long time. Just like, you know, you do your house, if you have, you lay down mulch, you put some some type of screen or some type of covering to kill the grass from growing up. However, uh many of the schools on this list I personally visit, that those grounds have not been kept up. So that's a concern to me, putting mulch, putting wood, whatever you wanna put on there. However, the bottom line, if nobody goes and keep up those things, what then? Then we becoming three or four years from now, purchasing more mulch. And, you know, the, I I'm gonna be honest with you, I visit myself along with these trustees, so we've seen these playgrounds. And we walk right up and pull the grass out, and you see the mulch, you see the paddy, it's all there. But I think that what we neglect to do is keep up those playgrounds.
And I think Mr. Gilbert, I agree with you. Mr. Gilbert made a great point earlier as regards to our council park.
Okay.
Our fields department that may have many things on our plays, the assistant department that maintains our playgrounds.
Okay.
That's it, that's a part of the three.
Exactly, okay. Well, thank you for your opportunity to answer some of the questions from the trustees, but this item is a possible action, we don't have to take action on it tonight. What is the will of the board? What's the will, well, let's do that. One, two, what's your will, trustee? Okay, we have four that's saying no, so we haven't taken any action on this. You, you okay?
Yeah.
Okay. All right, superintendent, we will not be taking any action on the the mulch at this time. Uh, information, Dr. Porter.
Okay, average daily enrollment, eight thousand nine hundred forty, average daily attendance, ninety-three point eighteen. I would like to announce that we will be closed tomorrow, which is Good Friday, so there will be no Good Friday, so make sure the students are asleep.
Thank you, Dr. Porter Reed, and students, please go to sleep tomorrow, it's late. The time is at nine twenty-six, and this board, uh, before our finished school meeting is now, and thank you for your time.